All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Robin, can you please call roll?
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. McDulte?
Here.
Mr. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
All right, on to new business. The first case we're gonna discuss tonight is the rezoning application ZON-22-02, Planned for Land LLC. Can you, you wanna go through the staff report first? Thank you.
This is an application from Planned for Land LLC regarding a site located at 7959 South Old State Road in Lewis Center. The applicant is requesting to rezone 1.807 acres from a farm residential to split a single lot into three separate lots. Lot one would contain 0.56 acres, lot two would contain 0.63 acres, and lot three would contain 0.62 acres. Lot one currently has an existing house residing on the property. The applicant is specifically requesting to rezone a farm residential lot to a single-family planned residential district and split the current parcel into three lots. The proposed development will comply with all single-family planned residential district standards and will include three tree preservation areas along the northeast and southern parts of the development. A shared access easement also exists along South Old State Road for access into lots one and two. Only one divergence is requested from Section 10.066, which requires a plat. The property is surrounded by single-family planned residential districts on all four sides. On page two, you have the aerial and the site plan showing the configuration of the three proposed lots. A brief summary of the rezoning request. So, the development would comply with density, parking, minimum floor area, and development standards. All those would comply with the single-family planned residential district standards. Open space requirement, while they are not specifically dedicating open space, they are proposing to record three tree preservation areas around the property in lieu of conditional open space maintained by an HOA. The township would accept these tree preservation easements, that is acceptable to the township. The applicant again is requesting one divergence from the plating requirements, given that the standards would be accomplished through the development plan commitments and recorded deed restrictions. The only additional comment from staff. Staff would like to request some clarification from the applicant as to whether a potential house built on lot three on Hayer Court would be considered part of the Walkerwood subdivision. Obviously, we'd have separate zoning text, but we were curious about joining Walkerwood's HOA and other items such as that. Delaware County Regional Planning Commission did recommend conditional approval of this application, subject to concurance by RPC staff with a divergence request not to plat. And if the preservation acts of access easements can be created to the satisfaction of Orange Township, which I believe I can say they were, in continued detail provided by the sanitary engineer's office regarding whether all three lots can be used.
All right, thank you, Robin. Does the applicant wish to come up and address the staff comment as well as go over the project, please?
Sure.
Can you please state your name and address as well?
Joe Place with Planned for Land One South Harrison Street in Ashley, Ohio. I appreciate the staff's comments. As far as present, what's being presented to you? We've worked on some different layouts for this property over the past year, and this seemed the most logical, utilizing existing access points, compliant density, lot sizes that are pretty comparable to the area. I do think that my client would be interested in looking at what the option would be to be a part of the homeowners association with lot three. So, if that's something we could explore as a condition of approval, I think we'd be open to that. I'm not sure the guiding documents, it's probably above my pay grade as far as how we might become a part of the HOA. But if that is an option, I think that's something we would definitely explore. The development text was laid out to be compliant with the area, try to blend in with the existing area and with those existing access points, not to put a hindrance on traffic or anything like that. So, otherwise, the divergence we requested is typical. We'd done the accretes, lot split, down the road. That was very similar. We put tree preservation easement, which we're currently in the process of recording now, granting those tree preservation easements, and then we'll follow that with the no plat approval that we have approached staff with. So, be very similar to the project we did down the road. But otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Definitely open to those comments. I did see regional planning's comment about sanitary service. Sanitary indicated that there's a couple easements that would need to be put in place. We replaced those with a no plat approval. Some of that's gonna be subject to other apartments' comments, so we've not officially laid those out yet. They mentioned that if there's any sanitary service that crosses the site, that it has to be relocated. We're well aware of that. Those would be relocated to the boundaries of the site outside of the tree reserve, likely the south or the central property line to serve the site. But that's, those are details we'll work out as part of the no plat lot split approval. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the board?
I think, one, only one I have is I think that whatever lot three there, that's in Walkerwood, in my opinion, that has to be a part of the homeowners association. I don't, I just think about that long-term, but too many things can go wrong if that's not really a part of the neighborhood.
So, the question I have, it has the county engineer commented about South Old State. Normally, they'd like to get rid of the single-family drive access on South Old State. It tends to slow down the traffic. They prefer to have the cuts from the subdivision. So, I was wondering if they voiced anything about this project and whether or not all the lots should access, I guess, as Hayer Court and meet hard with Walkerwood, and therefore, you could vacate the curb cut on Old State. So, I was wondering if the county engineer had been approached with this.
We did approach them for preliminary comments. It was our understanding that the homeowners association probably would not desire all three lots to come in off of their residential roads. So, that was the nature of the request. But we understand the engineers' interests, but we also understand regional planning. Regional planning's comments were more in line with distributing the access points.
Okay, 'cause that's, you know, the traffic. And there already is a curb cut on Hayer Road for this lot anyway.
Correct.
So, that's why I was like, you're not, you're adding two more houses to a subdivision that already has a curb cut. So, for me, that sort of ties into, if you put one house in Walkerwood subdivision, why wouldn't you just? So, do all of them. So, that's why I was curious about that. Because again, I know the county engineer doesn't, is trying to limit the number of single-family house curb cuts along Old State.
Yeah, I think it would also result in a shared driveway, a common access driveway, and the county's also trying to eliminate some of those, so.
I wasn't gonna bring that up, but yes, that is another issue.
Like I said, we did have it laid out that way at one point, but the discussion kinda went back to this being the least impactful for neighbors. So, but we're open to discussion, but at the end of the day, I understand this might be least impactful for everybody.
And lot one is an existing structure that was built quite a while ago, right? It's gonna be hard, I mean, not to say that the HOA requirements are stringent, but it would be, I don't necessarily think, I don't know. It could be a challenge putting that house on the HOA as it's probably, could possibly already have specific violations just because it wasn't part of it to begin with, so.
Correct.
Well, is that house remaining, or is it being replaced with a new one?
It will be renovated to comply with the proposed development text, but it is not, yeah, it's not compliant today. It'll be brought into compliance with the development plan that we've presented. I'm not sure the HOA's text, if there's something additional that would be required, but it is oriented toward Old State. So, I think reorienting it or redeveloping it in a way that it's more oriented to the site might be more problematic, too. Like I said, I've been planning this development plan for about 12 months, so it's been on my mind for a while. And we've looked at a lot of different options, and I do respect all those comments. I think you guys are giving due diligence to the whole process. I think the shared access point ended up being an mediated result with the county to try to figure out how to be least impactful to the internal grid network as well.
That curb cut is there existing today for that house, correct?
It is, yes. It's not likely that we get two cuts on Old State, or we'd want two cuts. There's substantial stormwater improvements that are in place on both sides. Even removing that curb cut would be a substantial change to the character of the site. So, we thought just utilizing the existing access, we could put a 30-by-30 easement over it and share access for those front two lots easily.
Yeah, and from an approach standpoint, I mean, obviously, the existing house is facing Old State, the front of the house. The way that you would approach it, it looks like the proposed one, you're looking at a front-loaded garage. It would be somewhat of a challenge if that driveway was coming from behind, or that would have to switch to a side-load or something like that. I'm not necessarily opposed to what you're showing here. I don't have any issues. I think to Dennis's point, the house coming off of Hayer Court, I feel like it definitely should probably be included in the HOA just so it maintains the standards of the neighborhood and, you know, has the same character and.
Street front.
Street front design, everything, so yeah. I'm sorry, do you have more, do you have more comments?
Actually, since you're keeping the existing house that already faces South Old State, it would make sense just to keep that access. I had one time thought that perhaps it was gonna be demolished. That has been known to happen. And if you're starting off with a blank slate, but if you're keeping it and preserving it and bringing it up to code and regulation, it would make sense to keep that access. So, if the county engineer has no problems with it, those can face Old State. And then, I agree, the one, I don't know how to pronounce it, Hayer Court?
Yeah.
Should follow the model set by the neighborhood so it's more integrated with the rest of the neighborhood and isn't sort of, doesn't stand out.
Yeah, I'm not so challenged by the, 'cause it already stands out, right? I mean, the way it is right now, it's already standing. That's like, to me, that's almost an optional thing. For certainly, the access points are pretty critical to what the ultimate goal is here. So, I guess I'm just saying I'm not so challenged by the homeowners association thinking it's standing there by itself anyhow. So, even if you're in the neighborhood and hopefully you'll comply with whatever those standards are.
Sure, definitely, yeah. I don't know the, I don't know the process to get into the HOA, but we'll definitely approach them to see what we can do to initiate that.
The only other thing, real quick, so lot two, and I forgot my, the grading plan, but, correct me if I'm wrong, that kinda slopes, that's actually going north, like the way that that site drains today, correct?
It drains north, correct, yeah.
So. So, with building up that pad for that house and grading around that, do you foresee, or I'm assuming you guys have looked at what impacts, if any, that would have as far as drainage? Is there any, like, inlets being proposed or anything that would be required to drain that? Or is it just going into a drainage easement that is naturally draining off-site?
We would propose it all to go west toward the road right away. Any downspouts, any type of thumps, anything like that would all be directed toward the drainage easement that exists along Old State.
On Old State, okay.
Yeah, there's a substantial drainage improvement that's been done there.
Yeah.
That's a better outlet than heading into the north.
Yeah.
I, you know, obviously, the net flow of water would be decreased as a part of this, maintained or decreased according to the state law, but we would ultimately be directing that water to the most adequate outlet, which would be to the west on Old State.
Okay. Yeah, I, that's, that's good to know, because I, what I, obviously, what we don't wanna create is that, you know, there's a low point or something towards the back of that lot, or even to the neighbor to the north where it's shedding the water on, you know, any impervious material or surfaces that are created by that development. But it doesn't, it doesn't appear that way. I just wanted to confirm it with you, so.
No, that's, well, I do think part of the no plat approval lot split will have to do a drainage review with the county.
Right, right.
They may require a drainage easement across the north property line to direct water. I'm just not sure their preference is.
Yeah, yeah, and they usually handle all that. I'm just, just from a development standpoint, I wanted to make sure it was thought through a little bit.
Yeah, those edges out running are sizable.
Yeah, oh yeah.
These are smaller, these are less. Yeah, I think we'd like to utilize those as much as possible.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I think the layout of this lot makes a lot of sense, given the other single-family houses along South Old State are all forward-facing. So, I think if we, you know, turn them, as mentioned before, that would mess up the consistency. But I also concur with the desire to make sure lot number three is incorporated with the HOA.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up to public comment. I will ask that comments are kept to three minutes or less and avoid any redundancy. So, if someone already makes a comment or something similar to what you were gonna say, we don't, you know, just one time, and then we'll have the applicant address those comments. So, when you come up to speak, just give your name and address, please.
My name's Dan Knight, I'm at St. Louis 22 Kingman. And I do want to thank you for that question you just asked. The house just to the north of lot two, I get a tremendous amount of drainage into my property line. It's caused me a lot of issues with my property. And I just wanted to make sure that this does not add to that at all.
All right. Any other public comments?
Hello, I'm John Dell, I live at 7886 South Old State.
All right, good job.
This is just an opinion. I've lived here for 36 years, I built my home. I'm across the street, just a little bit north from that property. Shared driveways are a bad idea for lots of reasons. I wish you'd look into that a little bit. This idea of taking an existing piece of land and dividing it up just because you can get zoning and build a couple more homes on it, I think the only thing you can possibly drive that is probably revenue. Right now, real estate's good, nobody's built any more of it. The fact that you're gonna have two houses there, one existing and one new one, and then one third one that's probably gonna end up in Walkerwood, you're kinda building a hodgepodge. You've already got an existing home, you can't change its grade. The county, I'm pretty certain, will insist on a new elevation for the two new builds, and they won't be anything like the old one. When that happens, are they gonna tear down the old existing home, having gotten theirs in? And then either build a third new home, or whatever. I live on a little over two acres, and I, the idea of dividing it by threes to build two more homes, you're gonna start changing the look of Old State Road from Old Powell Road North. All those houses were built on a net acre. When I bought, you had to have one and an eighth acre to build a home, and they wouldn't give you a permit. And there's a reason for that. You know, a lot of their ranch homes, for the most part. Chopping that up into three, I can't imagine, first of all, it's on a gravel driveway, it's gonna be pretty easy to abandon the driveway out to Old State Road where it's hard to get in and out, and probably run the three homes out the back into Walkerwood. So, whether they know it or not, Walkerwood folks are probably gonna end up with the traffic of three homes onto that street. But that's all, I just, I'm speaking against it.
All right, thanks, John. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Jill Noackill, 20490 York Court, like, next to where proposed lot three's going to go. So, mine is a little redundant, but he was speaking on behalf of lot two. We get tons of drainage from the current home, to the point where our yard is pretty much flooded, composted at all times. So, I do wanna make sure that that's addressed for lot three as well. And then, secondly, I think there's some confusion as far as where the property line is. I did not see it on the application where the pin is next to our house. I saw the other pins, but there is an iron pin. The current owners of the farmhouse are very confused about where their property line is. So, I wanna make sure that that is, that is known, that there is a pin currently there and it's significantly off from where the current owners think that it is, so.
Thank you, Jill. Any other public comment? All right, Joe, do you have anything to respond, or any further comments?
Just to reiterate, we'll take care of the drainage as part of the review. Business department has to make sure that we can address that as part of the review there. I'll work on the boundary line issue. I'll help get applied and make sure.
I thought it was being nice by doing our line, and I was like, yeah! And this came out, I was like, no!
Yeah. We may have interpreted that it's a preferred river. So, we'll have to have a property survey as part of the lot split process and make sure those pins are what we want. Obviously, the homeowners will be aware as we start looking at the new boundary lines, but we'll correct those. Hopefully, the tree reserve in that area will be maintained, but not, once those are established, too. We'll make sure there's maybe permanent markers back there as well. I usually try to mark the limits of the tree reserve some way so people know down there that there's, that there is some in there. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any further comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, how do you question it there? Are you going to do the renovation or the rehab of the home? Or the first, which lot is gonna be the renovation first, I guess? Have you already made that presentation, or?
I believe the shared access of Old State would likely be the first. The home itself would be renovated, and then that house to the north. It's my understanding, current owners are planning to build and renovate these, but they do not want to sell them and have somebody else develop. So, they'll plan to do it likewise in a clockwise manner there.
Is Delaware County engineering insisting on the shared access on Old State?
They will not allow individual drives because of the pre-engineered.
Yeah, yeah, we know that, we've done that before.
So, this is called a shared access point, it's not a common access drive, but it is shared for the duration of the upfront. It may take a configuration that has a more natural split there, but for geography purposes, try to show the spirit and intent of what's being proposed to you. But yeah, I agree, common access drives are not a preferred method, so.
No, but we're aware where Delaware County has gone with that for years, so that's.
Yeah, although I do agree, I guess, with Mr. John, he brought up the fact that shared access. How, I guess I'm concerned about how that shared access is gonna be shared, assuming in the deed, and.
Yeah, through a no plat approval, we do what's called a shared access easement, and then it'd be a 50-50 responsibility. It would take a majority to change or alter it, so that's both owners. So, both owners have to agree to any upgrades. Maintenance is a required responsibility.
And that's my concern.
I mean, at some point, Old State's gonna get wiped in the future. We all know that, it's just what's gonna happen. The other thing is, is there a way to make sure in this document that lot three becomes a part of the Walkerwood HOA? I think it's that critical. It has to.
Yeah.
Because I think future, you know, if you got some wild owner who wants to do anything outside of what the HOA wants, or if that's gonna, could just stand there. No, that has to be a part of the HOA. Is it, should, does that need to be written into this?
Yes, yes, that could be a modification.
Would that be acceptable to you?
If the HOA will have us. So, it would definitely be a discussion that we need to have. I'm not sure, I know some covenants are written as non-expansive, some allow. So, if we can incorporate in to their HOA, that's something we can approach and how that happens. But yeah, I think as a condition of your approval, that would be something that we could add as a stipulation on the NPA language.
I understand what you're saying, is that if the HOA rejected it, which I can't imagine they would, that's not on you anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it's in their best interest.
It's in their best interest.
To make sure the neighborhood standards are maintained.
Yeah, so your staff has a sign-off on the lot split. We'll make sure that that issue has been reached and that we have a formal response from them. And if we're appropriate, we'll make sure that's taken care of before the lot split comes through to you.
All right, any other comments? Can I get a recommendation to approve zoning application ZON-22-02, Planned for Land LLC, with modifications? I guess, for the HOA. Second?
I second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDulte?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Okay, on to the second rezoning application, ZON-22-03. The applicant is Joe Place for 5495 South Old State Road in Lewis Center, Ohio. Joe, or, I'm sorry, Robin, do you wanna go ahead and give a staff report on this one, please?
So, this is an application from Planned for Land regarding a site at 5495 South Old State Road in Lewis Center. The applicant is requesting to rezone 4.465 acres from a farm residential to split a single lot into two separate lots. Track one would contain 3.62 acres, and track two would contain 0.89 acres. Track one currently has an existing house today on the ground. The site is located on the east side of Old State Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone that lot one lot in a single-family planned residential district and split it from a parcel into two lots. Proposed development will comply with all single-family planned residential standards, includes a 50-feet highway easement, 12-foot Delco water easement, 20-foot sanitary easement, drainage easement, and a 75-foot tree preservation area located along the northern side of the property. Only one divergence is requested, and that is from Section 10.066, which requires a plat. The site is surrounded by farm residential districts to the north and then single-family planned residential districts to the southeast and west of the site. Page two of the staff report will show you the aerial photograph and then the site plan of how they are proposing to split the two lots. Again, a brief summary of applicant's rezoning requests. Density and unit count, parking, minimum floor area, and development standards would all comply with the single-family planned residential district standards. And again, as we saw at the last application, there is no dedicated open space per se, but there is a tree preservation easement that would be granted to the township in lieu of open space. And it would be build-in space requirements in that area. Delaware County Regional Planning Commission did recommend conditional approval of this application, subject to concurance by RPC staff with the divergence request to not plat. The preservation and access easements can be created to the satisfaction of Orange Township, which they are. And if individual driveways are not feasible and an access easement must be created within the site, it would trigger a common access driveway subdivision plan. All right, please, a second.
All right, thank you, Robin. All right, does the applicant wish to come up and speak to this project as well, please? I guess we'll be naming address again.
Joe Place, Planned for Land One South Harrison Street in Ashley, Ohio. I'm here with the property owner as well, closer joining us as well. So, I don't have anything necessarily to add. I think the staff did a great job in their review. I understand that there's a possibility of more lots for zoning, but their interest is to just split this single lot, provide an opportunity, I believe, for a son to build next to him. So, they have a long history of ownership here, and I think heritage of a lot. They're doing justice to preserve it as it's indicated on the plan. So, I don't know about access on this one. I believe that we will have separate access points because of the location and also because of the substantial nature of the creek passes through there. But we'll work that process out with the engineer's office. We indicated that likely be a better crossing on the south side to not cross the creek. So, if shared access is requested, that can easily be accomplished at the location shown, just diverting the existing drive to the north. But I don't believe that the lots goes to vacate the existing drive because of the topography and slope of the drive and how it goes back to the existing home. So, I don't have anything else to add, but if you have any questions, we're here to. here to, uh, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
I'm a little confused. Didn't this one come up before?
Seems like. Pre-op, we looked at it pre-op.
I came over and asked for a variance and I talked to you guys about it.
Okay, that's, that's where we saw this, okay.
Yeah.
I thought, that's just me, oh, okay. So I think your, on the shared driveway, isn't that right? That was what also came up.
I mean, I have some comments, but I want to wait till you're done. Um, to be honest, I found this a little confusing at first, cause, um, on the application, on the first page, it says you're changing the zoning from FR-one, which is farm residential one, to farm residential one, which I thought was confusing. Cause then when you go on page eight, it says you're going to be a single-family planned residential district, but your gross density lot coverage is point-four-six units per acre, but you're asking to split it into two lots. So I'm a little confused as to what's going on here. If it's just a simple lot split into two lots, two single families, that makes sense, but first it says you're staying farm residential and then it says you can have that up to point-four-six units per acre, but that's not what's being shown here. So if you could sort of clarify that for me, that's one thing that I, I was like confused about. And I kept looking at the plans going, well, the plans show a simple two, two houses, but that's not what the text says. And then again, the question of Delaware County engineer asking for, you know, um, a, another drive, whether that, that's been figured out yet as well. Um, so I'd like to get some of this stuff, like, resolved.
I can address. So the farm residential indication on the application, uh, should be SFPRD, which was clarified. I, I'm assuming legal notice was correct, so I assume maybe that was an interpretation that, uh, was made, um, but that, that should, change should be made, obviously. Um, the spirit and intent of the application as indicated on the cover is we are seeking the SFPRD, uh, as a method for doing this. And the point-four is based on the overall, uh, density. Uh, so it's, uh, the fact that there's a creek or lot being retained at the north side, so it's, uh, generating that point-four, uh, point-four units per acre.
Yeah, so point-four units per acre. Okay, I'm trying to do the math, but, okay. So you're doing it based on that one, not the lower one?
Well, it's the two lots together.
The two lots together?
Four-point-four-six-five acres, uh, so two units on four-point, four-point-four-six-five acres.
Excuse me while I try to do some math here.
And like I said, the, the engineer, we did approach them, uh, part of the discussion on access is we typically have to do site distance exhibits along the roadway. Uh, that's something that we will approach them with, with the NPA, the no-plat approval lot split, and they can make a determination whether or not they would permit a second drive. If you have a request, that's something we can address separately. But, um, I, I'm not sure that they'll want us to share, uh, an access point based on the existing driveway. Uh, if, if they do, they may request it to be a new access point to the south, so that's why we left some flexibility in that language. But it is something that we would typically do after the elevations on the roadway are shot. We just typically hit zoning first before, uh, getting into the survey and more substantial costs that come with the lot split process.
The intention was still just those two houses on these, on these lots.
Correct, yes.
The original one, which is back here.
Really, no, like, put it up in that one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought, right.
So, Christine is doing some math. Any other comments? Um, I, I will ask one question about, uh, track two. So the new proposed house, um, i- is there a reason why, and, and I'm not saying that the access point or what's being proposed needs to move necessarily, but the house, if there was an opportunity to maybe shift that up further north, only because the, the, uh, the lot there, and you can see where it falls off, you're kind of building right there, so you would have to almost grade out to the edge of that lot and kind of be at a high point, it being that far to the south, if that makes sense. And what I, obviously trying to avoid again here is just if, if you come off that edge of the house and, you know, gradually slope down for, for drainage, it's going to be a fairly steep slope possibly going down there, just because you're on the, your e- edge of that, um, uh, you know, you're cutting into that hillside, or I guess is what.
So, the, based on the way I've drawn the vision to walk out, uh, to the sides.
Okay.
Uh, the grade would be, uh, kind of matching. There is substantial topography there, so. Uh, but it's something, we, we identified the entire building, building envelope with the idea that that could be adjusted, uh, so we're not getting locked in on building locations. But, uh, from a practicality standpoint, I wanted to show it. I think the most logical spot for the access is as far south as we can go.
Yeah.
And again, that's why I don't think that the county's going to push us for shared access.
Right.
Because getting away from that call then's a good idea.
Yeah.
I figured out the math issue.
Okay.
It's, it's units per acre of the gross lot area, not of the net which excludes with the right-of-way and everything. So it's everything altogether, not with the right-of-way. So I think that's gross versus net is where the confusion lies.
Any other comments from the board on this one before we open to public comment? All right, at this time we'll open up to public comment. Same rules as the first application. Uh, try to limit your comments to three minutes and, uh, avoid any redundancy. Do we have any, uh, anybody in the public wishing to speak tonight? Nope. Okay. Go.
I'm Dave Cook. I live at, uh, two-nine-four-five Brookhaven Drive, uh, east of the, uh, house with the swimming pool and, uh, am supportive of this, uh, change. The Curtis family has, uh, uh, been members of this community for a long time and actually owned the property at one point where the Willow Springs development is, uh, is located. And, uh, familiar with their son and, uh, support this, uh, application.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments in the public? All right, and the board, anything further to add? All right, can I get a recommendation to approve the zoning application zero N dash twenty-two dash zero-three, uh, for Plan for Land LLC with modifications? Do we, we have modifications? No modifications, okay.
No modifications, just change it.
With nothing. As submitted.
Second.
Mr. Mahalas?
Yes.
Mr. McColty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you. All right, now on to, uh, our third and final application, which is application zero N dash twenty-two dash zero-five, New Gen Tennis Facility. Um, this is located on Green Meadows Drive in Lewis Center, Ohio. Uh, Robin, can you please go through the staff report on this one?
Sure. And I will, I will note from the outset that, uh, we did meet with the applicant, uh, zoning staff and, uh, fire department staff met with the applicant yesterday. I think we did clear, uh, a number of things that were, are in my written staff report, so I will do some verbal edits as we go through this.
Sounds good.
Uh, this is an application from, uh, New Gen Tennis Facility represented by Rebecca J. Maugh. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately three-point-seven-three-six acres from plant commercial and office district to another plant commercial office district to allow for an indoor outdoor recreation facility consisting of six pickleball courts with a dome or metal warehouse structure, five tennis courts under a dome, three tennis courts under a permanent roof, office and service, service building space, a parking area and landscaping on the ground. In 2014, uh, the Orange Township Board of Trustees approved a develop, a development plan and development text for the Slate Ridge Plant Commercial and Office District East, which includes this property and the parent parcel. The site is, uh, ordered to the north and south by plant commercial and office districts. Uh, to the east is the Conrill Railroad, uh, and then FR-one parcel, uh, which is owned by Delco. Uh, to the west is Green Meadows Drive, also plant commercial office district. On page two, you can see, uh, the site layout, uh, the building count, again, uh, proposing six pickleball courts with a dome or metal warehouse, five tennis courts under a dome, three tennis courts under a permanent roof, office and service building space to be constructed in two phases with two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine square feet of office space initially and additional six thousand square feet proposed in the later phase. The total open space proposed is forty-two-point-five percent or roughly one-point-five-nine acres. Sixty-three parking spaces are proposed. Uh, they are asking for a divergence, uh, for the parking as this use is not, uh, not currently, uh, listed, uh, in the Orange Township zoning resolution as a, a use which has a specific apartment count. Uh, for lighting, uh, I will mention, uh, in the written staff report, um, it was assumed the applicant was not providing a lighting plan. Uh, the applicant has provided that lighting plan, uh, that was sent to you digitally, uh, earlier today and you have a physical copy in front of you. Uh, I will, uh, let the applicant address that in their presentation as well. For signage, applicant's proposing one, two post or metal sign to be constructed, the aluminum for final content to be determined. The total proposed sign area is only five-point-four square feet. The development standards, building setbacks are as follows. Uh, front fifty feet, uh, from the right-of-way of Green Meadows Drive, uh, to this, uh, one side to the south is twenty-five, uh, feet, which includes a no-build zone. Uh, the north side would be twelve-point-five feet, uh, and then the rear would be four feet. So a total of two divergences have been requested. Uh, one from section fourteen-point-zero-six, be, uh, requesting to allow each phase, including the first, to be less than five acres of property, uh, given the, uh, the entire, entirety of this property to be purchased, developed and split, uh, by the applicant from the parent parcel is less than five acres. And then again, the aforementioned, uh, parking, um, uh, divergence. And, uh, again, uh, we thought that there would have to be a divergence for not submitting the lighting plan, but, uh, now that there is a lighting plan, uh, that divergence doesn't longer require. The proposed land use map in the Orange Township Comprehensive Plan does identify this one parcel as being. Uh, other staff comments, uh, again, uh, many of these items have been addressed, uh, since I wrote the staff report. Um, so the applicant has provided, uh, rendering of the dome structures over the tennis courts and the volleyball courts. Uh, staff would like, uh, clarification as to the, uh, amount of time per year that the domes would be erected. Um, staff would like clarification as to the permits of mechanicals for the dome structures, uh, and whether or not they will be screened. Um, we ask for additional, uh, materials, uh, for the dumpster enclosure. Um, and then again, uh, more clarification regarding lighting, which the applicant will address in his presentation. The Delaware County Engineer's Office, uh, did indicate to, it did indicate to Orange Township staff that a shared access is a possibility on the north side of this site, though it also grant access from parcel directly to the north. Uh, staff would like clarification as to the intention of the applicant as to this matter, which I also believe will be addressed. Uh, the fire department, um, did have some concerns about emergency access to the rear of the property, uh, as well as hiding water lines, uh, in the rear of the property. Uh, that goes to be addressed in the presentation as well. Uh, Orange Township Parks and Operations Department also requested removal of the graph repair as permitted tree type, uh, given that that was recently declared an invasive species in Ohio by ODNR. Uh, the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission has not yet heard this application. They will be hearing it, uh, at their meeting, uh, this Thursday, May twenty-sixth, so they have not issued recommendation as of yet. That concludes this end.
Okay, applicant, just to go over the project with us?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Maugh with the Plank Law Firm with an office address on four-eleven East Town Street, Columbus, Ohio. I would like to present some boards that are bigger on the easel over here in the corner. Yes, so the applicant is the New Gen Tennis Facility, and we also have Garrett Baker here tonight. He's with American Structure Point, our engineering firm. We have also our applicant representative, Representative Tito Bonadonna, so they can also help answer any questions you may have at the end. Um, the owner, of course, is Kerbler Farms, which was the original owner and developer of this entire site. Back in two thousand and fourteen, they came in with a PCD East for Slate Ridge. That is a planned office and commercial district for this thirty-acre tract, and we are just developing and proposing to split off the three-point-seven-three-six acres of that thirty-one-point-six acre parent tract. This is actually not going to require a simple lot split. It needs to be a replat, so we have filed that with the county engineer and your Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, because this is actually a lot in an unplanted subdivision. It's lot nine-zero-eight-eight, so we will need two assigned lots for this, um, split to occur. So that has been filed. So with this rezoning, the reason we need a rezoning is because the original planned commercial office, um, PCD East text has a lot of permitted uses and prohibited uses and development standards, none of which precisely identified our use within it. So even though it's a compatible use in terms of a recreational facility, a commercial use, and is compatible with all of the uses in the area, we did need to seek out rezoning to modify the text. So that's the purpose of this application, simply to draft new language for that text. So that's why it's going from PCD to PCD, staying that same district. Um, again, the parent parcel is an existing vacant tract of land, and we have, and the owner has already established that ten-foot asphalt path. It's a connection walking path on the opposite side of Green Meadows Drive. That will be the connection throughout this, um, area. And this site is actually just north of the planned industrial district to the south, which is not a part of Slate Ridge, but an industrial district. And then to the east is a railroad, and then of course you have the water Delco facility. But other parts of the PCD are north and east of this site. The proposed rezoning is for, again, the PCD East district again, and it is for this pickleball tennis facility. And I would like to talk a little bit about the proposal in general and then what are the phases that the client is proposing. So the, um, development would be an indoor/outdoor tennis and pickleball facility. So that is the precise language we added within, or recreational facility within the text. Also, the site for phase one will be more pushed towards the rear. So the phase one portion is the, uh, pickleball courts you see in the rear by the railroad tracks. The, um, tennis courts under dome would be next. That's going in towards Green Meadows from the rear. And then you have a small office building service structure that is going to be part of phase one. So that's right in the middle of that site plan, if you can see that smaller building structure. The second phase will include the rest of the buildings that you see out front, and of course the parking areas will be there as part of phase one. You, you'll need people to have a place to access the property to park and use the connection paths back to the rear where the phase one development will, will occur. The phasing of phase two, or the timing, would be five to ten years out. That is an estimate at this time. Now, the buildings in the future for phase two would also be compatible with and consistent with the architectural elevations you see in your packet. That farmhouse-style, modern, um, soft white with the black windows and trim, that is part of that smaller service and office structure in the center of the property that will be built in phase one. That same architectural style and color and material will be taken through to the other buildings as well in the second phase. For access, the, um, client will be having. For access, the, um, client will be having one curb cut allowed to this property. The entirety of the three thirty-one point six acres is allowed to have, by the current zoning text, two curb cuts totally. So the seller and I have been negotiating that we probably need to make this a common access drive and push our access drive a little bit up north to be on the common lot line so that the seller's remainder tract can have that shared access point plus their second access point up north. That benefits them, that also works for us. We'll need to adjust some language in the text if that is so approved here, but that is the direction we're going to head. Um, related to setbacks, we do comply with the setbacks, the building configuration layout of the original two thousand fourteen text. We have the setbacks denoted on the site plan as well as in the text. I can take you through the text in a moment, there's a few that I do want to specifically call out as to standards and commitments. Again, we are going to install internally into the site, um, a connection and sidewalk. You will note on the, um, site plan as well as the landscape plan that is shown, that would go to the rear of the property and around. There's also a landscape plan within your packet. I have copies of the landscape plan if you'd like to see that and don't have it in your pocket or packet, I can pass that out, if that's okay.
Is it different from the topic?
It's no different, I just wanted to make sure.
It's the same.
It is the same. So as you can tell, we didn't have a lot of landscaping anyway on that north property line because the sidewalk would have been installed there. So if we're going to put that common access drive there, there can still be a sidewalk shared with the common access drive, but again, there won't be any landscaping in that area. I believe your code addresses your parking setbacks by parking areas, not necessarily drive aisles. So it would be fine to put a drive aisle right on that common lot line. We do think the county engineer will appreciate the common access drive because of the seller's legal entitlement to only have two totally for the thirty-one point six acres. If you wouldn't mind, we could jump to setbacks. I would like to take you to, again, the data table on the site plan, but also if you wanted to go to page nineteen of our development text. That sets out for you the development standards, the setbacks. I think it might be eighteen or nineteen, if, if you can let me know. Mine says eighteen, but my packet says nineteen. It is eighteen, I apologize. So from the front, from Green Meadows Drive, there will be a fifty foot from right of way Green Meadows Drive setback. Of course, we have the south, twenty-five foot no build zone that's already established on the property and planted. We will preserve that and maintain that, so that has been noted. On the side, which is the north property line, there will be a twelve, twelve and a half building setback, and that's a minimum. The rear is a forty foot, so pretty good setbacks, and those all comply with the current text. The parking setbacks, we still have front, would be fifty for a parking setback. Side, the south, would be also twenty-five feet. The side north would be, um, ten, because again, that's parking areas, not drive aisles. And the rear would be forty. The landscaping, we have denoted those setbacks in this text, so we're making these commitments as well. Twenty-five feet from the right of way of Green Meadows. So there will be a landscape buffer and so mounting in the frontage to provide screening and buffering and beautification along the green meadows of frontage. And you can see all the planting details that we are providing throughout the site. On the side to the south, there will be a five foot landscape, um, setback. So landscaping can be within the no build area and obviously can be, um, within the buffer area between the building setback or parking setback and the lot line. In the rear, there, there is some landscaping getting close to the common, or the lot line, so that would be twenty-five feet. Or I'm sorry, ten feet, I apologize. If you go to, uh, page nineteen of your text, you will see we have delineated for this site the landscaping details. Now what we did is we pulled those trees and types of planting straight from the two thousand fourteen text. We do realize now that one of those that was pulled through to be consistent is no longer a deciduous, uh, tree. We will remove that, so I have committed to you, we have already removed it from my version of the text. You can see I've holding up, we've stricken that as a, as a landscaped item. But that is your landscape details. Um, if you would go to page eleven through twelve of the development text, this is the lighting standards. Now, we did not have a lighting plan at the date of the application filing, but right when I filed it with Mr. Beard, we talked about it. And he stated, even though we don't have the nighttime operations under your code, it is required. So even though we don't have nighttime operations, it is required. And we've, we did supplement our application with a lighting plan in your packet. In addition to the lighting plan, we have lighting brochures and specifications up here at my table. I can pass that if you're interested. We do have a slight change from the two thousand fourteen text that was approved for lighting. The reason for that under page eleven and twelve is some of those lighting standards are outdated, they're no longer available. So we say things like, or equivalent with language. And we're using the same sort of colors, same sort of lighting and ambiance with the lighting. You can see some of those specifications again on page eleven and twelve. In my version of the text, I also committed to staff in our meeting that I would be stopping the confusion in terms of the text had been drafted early on. And we stated we would, we would not provide a lighting plan, but that later, if there were nighttime operations, we would submit one and we would comply with code. That's a safe, uh, description. However, you can see on my version, I've stricken the language at the front of that responsible area that we're not going to say we're not providing a lighting plan or that, um, it's not submitted already as part of the application. Because it is submitted, we did supplement our application, so we can change that text. So we've committed to that, I can show this language to staff and see if they agree. But we're definitely going to provide you the final text as I've shown you the guidelines. I also would like to just briefly show you the architectural drawings unless, um, you have them readily available in your packets. It's again, a very nice farmhouse style water architectural package. And you can also see this on verbiage on page nine and ten of the development text. These are divergences from the original text because our, our, um, architecture is a little different than what would have been thought of for this vacant property at one time. So you can see there, though, it's being very consistent with using high quality materials like hardy plank, fiber, fiber cementous board. It talks about if there are, um, roofs that are slopes, they will use the same dimensional shingles and types and styles that were already in the text. However, we do have a few things that are different. Um, obviously, we have some dome structures. And those were different and very new and not contemplated under that text. The domes are fabric, they have attachment to a foundation, and that fiber material, ha, I do have specifications on that as well. But that's why the text has been drafted to allow for, um, a fabric type of dome, a seasonal type of structure, as well as the possibility or alternative for that pickleball court only in the very rear by the railroad track to have a metal building. So I do have, um, in your packets as well as on the board, I can flip to, a alternative of a possible metal building that could be out there. And, and the reason that's appropriate is it's near your railroad tracks out there and it's just north of the industrial district, that's south of this property. So we think that makes all the sense in the world to give the client an alternative related to that very last, uh, pickleball court only. So that is written into the text again under page nine and ten. Of course, if it's a metal building that is used, it won't have four sided architecture that is different and, and have variations. It'll be metal on all sides, and it would have more of a flat roof rather than a slope. So all of that is addressed. Related to, um, the staff's comments about dumpster screening, oh yes, we're well aware that dumpsters and any service structures would need to be screened and have to comply with code, and that language is in your text, and we commit to it fully, absolutely. We're just not showing it precisely on the site plan. But those details will have to be provided at the time of building permit. Um, let's see. Related to the fire department's comments, which we received yesterday, we heard that there were two items. One, um, to provide potentially a fire access or, uh, emergency access to the rear of the property. And we think that will make most sense when we adjust the, um, common access drive to the north property line, that at some point, once it reaches past the parking area, it will become an emergency access. It doesn't have to be a full drivable drive aisle, it can be a bollards with, um, pavers with grassy areas in between. Whatever meets your code, that can also be an emergency access. You can use bollards or gates or whatever the devices are you use in your township. But we will certainly address and meet any, uh, safety and fire responder comments related to that. Um, we've also heard a hydrant or hydrants may be needed for fire. And certainly there's rules of building code on the length of, uh, fire hose and how far apart those hydrants need to be. For sure, we will work with the fire department continuously through this process to make sure that before it's, you know, getting building permits, we will comply. Um, so we will be doing that work after this meeting. Related to stormwater management, we don't have any surface retention or detention ponds shown on this plan. Our worst case scenario, because it's very expensive, is to put underground storage on this property. So they need to use the full property for the structures, the domes, the pickleball courts, the tennis courts. So putting that underground makes sense, we need to utilize this full three point seven acres. But that is worst case scenario, and of course, we will manage and control the stormwater that our property, um, and development creates. And another scenario possibly, and we have had discussions with the property, um, not the property to the south, but the engineer related to the property to the south, is there is a pond down there. It wasn't initially installed to retain our, our property's, um, you know, development needs for stormwater, but it is sizable that we could use it. And then that has been conveyed to the public authority, and the county engineer is talking to us about using it for our stormwater. That would be a great solution. It's a little more affordable and it definitely works because that pond has been sized to handle our detention needs. So we will manage and handle our stormwater responsibly and in coordination with the county engineer. Um, also wanted to just touch on the Orange Township Comprehensive Plan. I know you'll see throughout the old text and my text that I pulled through, the original zoning had to basically mention, they worked totally in compliance with the comp plan, but it was approved because this made sense, this commercial office district in this area made sense. That is what the township at the time in two thousand fourteen wanted. However, we do think we are in conformance with the township's comp plan with this project because this is a commercial recreational use, and it is compatible with the township's community character as well as we add to the township's connectivity and, um, path network, so. Also, this is in line with the original development intent um, because, first of all, the seller approves of this use and is in contract with this applicant for them to purchase and develop the property in this way. They've also signed the zoning application, they're in full support. Um, but anyway, in terms of being the original developer of Slate Ridge, the, the permitted uses then were listed as like recreational, institutional, commercial, office, and recreational, which we mean all of that, so. We definitely are, um, within the original intent and spirit of this development plan that was approved. That is all I have at this time. Um, I do have more boards with, again, the architect, sure, I can flip through and show you some bigger, um, exhibits if you wish. And I do have the brochures of information on any detail you might wish to have. Are there any questions for our team at this time?
Well, you said that this was originally a planned commercial or a planned residential district, that you needed some divergences to occupy a couple of properties, was?
This is a planned commercial and office district. It's actually P C D East in Slate Ridge, which is exactly what we're going for now, it's the same zoning district.
Okay, so there's no divergences from that?
No, not for uses in terms of residential. Th- this was always planned for commercial office, recreational, and institutional.
What are the hours of this business?
So it's, um, I, I can have our operator and applicant speak to this better. The domes are seasonal, the domes would be, I believe, mid-March to mid-November. But there's indoor facilities, under buildings, and outdoor facilities, so it can be used all through the year. But if, if that did not answer the question, or is that?
Well, I'll be reasonable for the question because you talked about, you know, that you didn't believe you needed a lighting plan, but, but you put it in.
A lot of jurisdictions, I can answer that, that was my fault. Um, not really a fault, we look at the code and the code says a lighting plan. And then, um, a lot of jurisdictions say that, but they really don't enforce it unless there's nighttime operations.
That's kind of where I was going.
We assume what was needed, we don't have nighttime operations.
No nighttime operations. But the, the dome, you want the dome because you want to make these outside part of the year, these are?
Yes, the dome can be removed in mid-Nov- like, they'll be up from mid-March to, what is it, mid-March to? I'm sorry, mid-November to mid-March, the winter season. So you're keeping the occupants indoors in the dome. It can be heated and air conditioned and it has all that mechanicals. So it's mid-November to mid-March, I apologize, the winter season, they'll be in the domes. After that season, they are removed because they're seasonal and then they can be outdoors.
Wouldn't that be a divergence in itself because those kind of things aren't covered in our code anywhere, is that correct, Rob?
I don't believe it would be a divergence, no.
So, so you think what it would?
As long as the development text specifies that those kinds of structures would be allowed, which is what they're proposing.
So, so it's allowed as far as our, our code and development text is, is concerned?
It, it would be, uh, in this text at the liver.
And I can clarify, if you look at the text at the front page, this is literally just the development text for only the three point seven acres. So only our three point seven acres is subject to this. The rest of that property is still subject to the two thousand fourteen text that's already approved. So that's another way that you know no other portion of a property can have this text apply unless they come in for a rezoning like this and, uh, rezone the, the text to only be applicable to their portion of the property. But this literal packet, this big diagram, this is only pertaining to the three point seven acres.
And in the day, you'll have to comply with Delaware County, whatever they want to do with water. You'll have to comply with, uh, Orange Township Fire with whatever they wants to do for access. I already know those things will be taken care of or nothing can move forward. I'm not personally opposed to the domes that portion of the year.
Can you show exactly where the property is?
Yes, um, if you, yeah, should I point with my hand up there?
As if, the one thing I can't see is your property outline looks.
It, we do have an ALTA survey in your packet, but that pond is south of us. So that line that's just above that pond, if you went up and then, um?
That's where I saw it was.
It's not quite that far up or that, yeah, about right there. If you took a linear line over to the railroad track, that's the site. But we have an ALTA survey that shows it better, let me show you this one, this page here. This existing conditions plan shows you the vacant tract with a line splitting off the railroad track, but give it.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to do this.
Oh, the aerial, yeah.
That you included, so.
We would, we would have to draw like a CAD drawing of lines on that aerial to show you exactly where it is on that map.
So, just a couple of questions, I think, if that's all right, I don't know if you?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I have questions, but.
So, I know one of the divergences is in regards to parking, this is pretty unique. Um, but I think would be required would be almost double or, I don't know, whatever the number came out to. You're showing sixty-three, is that correct?
That's correct.
I've never played pickleball, how many people are on the court at?
So.
Or playing at one time?
Talking about this yesterday, so say you have that five court area with the dome.
Yeah.
I was hearing that there's only twenty to thirty occupants in it at one given time. It's not like a bunch of spectators are sitting at bleachers within it. It's the players, and they have one or two guests, and it's like, you know, twenty to, what, forty occupants? Or twenty to thirty occupants at one time?
Max, yeah.
Max.
Yeah, and so that's where, y- I was kind of getting a similar number, but I was taking a guess. With the dome, the, the tennis courts, and, and this is, uh, uh, obviously making an assumption that every single court is being, is used and then there's a someone watching, like each one. You're, you're right at or over that amount, um, of, of parking. I'm not necessarily saying it's low, um, but there, there's a couple of things regards to the parking is, is, you know, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the divergence whatsoever. Um, I, I get it, this isn't a commercial, you know, uh, facility that's, that's going to be, you know, like? like a grocery store or something that's gonna be bringing in a lot of traffic. But the, there's two things just in general with the layout and I don't know if this is something that can be done with, you know, extending the parking or maybe relocating it or something. But just looking at this, and I'm going off the scale here, really rough, but it, it appears that from the closest parking stall, the one in the top right corner on this image, the handicap stall there at the top right, to the front facade, so phase two is, you know, not built.
Right.
Is about two hundred and forty feet or two hundred, it's somewhere in there, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty feet. It's quite a distance to travel. And again, I'm not saying how to design it or necessarily, but if there was an opportunity to possibly extend the parking, relocate it, maybe phase, the phase separated out differently to where maybe the parking is closer to the facilities. I, I don't know if that's, if that's even possible. I, I get the complexities of the site as narrow as it is and as deep as it is. You're limited to, you know, certain designs. But that distance seems a little bit excessive to me. Is, you know, from, from, that's the closest stall, not, you know, you go back to the furthest most, you're probably walking well over three hundred feet.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think with the common access drive, if it's not just an emergency access with like pavers, grass and ballers, but is actually a drive aisle, you could take it down potentially if this is within the plan, but we will look at it. Take it down and possibly add some parking stalls in between the pickleball in that dome area with the five tennis courts. I don't know if it's feasible either. It certainly changes cost and layout. And I don't think they can change the dome size because those are a particular dome sized structure. And we do have, we're confined to the area of land the seller has agreed to let us purchase. And, you know, it's all subject to the purchase contract. However, these people are athletic persons. They're going to be able to walk that distance with no problem and play games and be occupants or a guest watching these games. We play with that sidewalk, you know, extending down that pedestrian connectivity. I think it'll be no problem in terms of pedestrian walkability. But if, and I don't think we need any more parking spaces. This is the number we would need for the operation. And we don't know of any code section that was close in terms of this type of use to even judge that requirement of code. But yeah, we agree with you, this use is not precisely delineated and we don't know what the parking requirement would have been. This does work for our use, but we can certainly look at if there's any potential to add parking closer to the rear part of the building.
Um, I'm just curious, on, on phase two, what, what is the proposed timeline between one and two? I'm sure there's a lot of factors in there of, you know, how many people are using the facilities and demand and things like that. What, is there a timeline that you guys have in mind?
Yeah, they would like to construct phase one in the fall or winter of two thousand twenty-two, so this year. And then phase two was the five to ten years out from two thousand twenty-two. That's an estimate.
Okay. Okay. The, the only other, other thing that I have that before everybody else can comment in, but it's, I, I, so I do like the, the design of the office space that you guys have with the kind of the farmhouse look and the water table, in the board and batten metal roof. I, I do like that. You know, obviously the dome is a temporary structure that's only up for, you said it was November to March, is that?
Yeah, mid-November to mid-March.
Okay. Obviously, from a scale perspective, when that thing is up, it's gonna dwarf this building significantly. And I, there's, there's one of these facilities, not, I'm not saying you're, that, what you're doing, but there's a dome athletic facility and I, I see it, I've seen it a lot and I can't remember where it is. But it's like the Bo Jackson or something, I don't know, whatever, some, that's what it's named. It's somewhere here close. But it's, it's significantly bright, like when the sun's out. Not that it is out that much when those months that you're naming.
Like your reflection?
It reflect, like very, it's like, yeah, now, I didn't see, I mean, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see any like reflectivity in the, in the dome information or the packets that you guys provided on that material. I mean, obviously, you know, somewhat durable and, you know, I'm not concerned about it like weathering or it's only up temporarily. If there's repairs that need made, this can happen when it's down. But I, I don't know if you guys have these facilities or put them up elsewhere. I, I, and it's not as much of a concern because we're not next to like a major highway or by twenty-three. This isn't right up on top of twenty-three. But I think like from a scale perspective, it, I feel like it would significantly dwarf this, this building. But again, I mean, I understand the challenge of, you know, those winter months and keeping this facility operational. You know, not many people are gonna wanna be out there and with weather and everything, playing tennis.
Right. The manufacturer of this dome has provided some of these similar domes in central Ohio and other parts of Ohio. And I can kind of list some cities or other locations where they have them. There's one at University of Cincinnati for football. There's a PAL YMCA pool in PAL, Ohio. The Wedgewood Golf Tennis in PAL, Ohio. The Avalon Inn Tennis in Warren, Ohio. Cleveland State, there's two domes, soccer and tennis, again, Cleveland, Ohio. And then Olympic Indoor Tennis, three domes tennis in Columbus. So there's some in central Ohio, there are some in Cincinnati and Cleveland.
Okay.
What are the dimensions of the dome, how tall?
Right. I think Mr. Tito should answer my question. The dimensions of the dome.
It's about thirty-six feet tall. And then we'll look depending on which one we're looking at. If we're looking at the five court dome, the biggest, the biggest one is two fifty-two by one twenty. And the second one is ninety-four by one twenty. The both of them are thirty-six feet tall.
And the height of the building is, I'm guessing probably twenty-five feet or?
The what?
The building height.
I think he said thirty-six.
But that's the dome, I said dome.
Oh, the building, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because you were saying it could dwarf the building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'm kind of curious what that building has.
Maybe not even that.
Yeah, well, building house is not labeled.
I'm, I'm guessing that's probably fifteen or twenty feet.
Maybe, yeah.
We have a building height standard in the text that's written in and it complied with the previous height district. I'm not sure exactly where it is at the moment. Let me look at my lot development standards to find it there. But our height district is listed.
I didn't kind of estimate where that is versus the thirty-six.
Yeah, maybe, maybe high twenties, maybe thirty.
Twenty feet or something like that.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
Because I'm trying to answer your question about the dome dwarfing the building.
Yeah.
It will definitely look bigger than the smaller office service structure that will be built in phase one. And then phase two will have the bigger permanent buildings later. And you're right that it will be a bit larger in size and dimension than that smaller office service building. But the height district is found under page eighteen of the text. The planned commercial and office district may have a fifty foot height. We are under fifty.
Oh, yeah.
And he testified to the thirty-six feet for the dome. So we're fine. And I think our building heights, the building permanent structure heights will be like thirty-five feet. So we're well under the fifty that is required and approved under the current text.
So let me ask this, the, from an operational standpoint, you guys, is this something that, you know, you guys, or the intention is to have like leagues coming in or is this training? Or is it just open to the public? It just, you just pay if you wanna use the facility? How, how does this, how does this work?
That's more of an operational question. So again, see, I think it's a private call, but I think.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, I have the dimensions of our domes here if you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I did see those. Yeah, thank you.
They only have one copy of each dome?
I think you had one in here. You had a, you had an image in here. Okay.
They should have it.
Yeah, it is in here.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I remember seeing it.
It's this thing, it's just difficult to read at the scale.
Yeah, well.
And to answer that question, all of the above. Leagues, we're gonna offer leagues to adults and coaching and teaching to especially our core business. We've been open actually for two years now, just renting adult facilities. And we've been working majorly with, with kids of all ages, but mostly with middle, middle school and high school builders. But to answer your question, all of the above leagues and coaching and.
Okay.
So it's public?
Public, yes, public rentals, offering everyone in the public that can come and learn from us. But also offering this space for rentals to the public as well. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
And if you don't mind, can I ask her, yes?
No, I have a question on, if you need answer something about that, I'll, I'll answer the question first.
Just to touch back on the, on the, can't remember the word, but the reflectiveness of the dome.
Reflective?
We, yes, and we, we talked about a few clubs that already have a dome as a reference. Use as a, as a reference, the one called Olympic Indoor Tennis is in Clintonville. It's right next to, parallel to seventy-one. They have three domes and they're right next to it. I think that'll be a good reference.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So you want to add that.
Yeah.
How the, between phase one being built and consideration for phase two, they said five to ten years, what's the driving factor that says, hey, we may speed that up and do that earlier?
And we have a business goes.
Yeah, solely that business.
Yes, and that's within our projections at least, like I mentioned, we've, me and my partner, we've been coaching for several years, but we've been, New Gen has been open for two years now. We're projecting to be able to afford and start this, this new part in about five to ten years.
And what will be in that space, the phase two space until phase one is built, or until phase two is built, sorry?
What would be in that space?
Mm-hmm.
Just landscape?
Landscaping, parking in the sidewalk.
Okay.
How long does it take to take one and now to put it up on here?
I'm sorry.
How long does it take to pick it down and then put it back up?
Depends on weather, but it takes no more than a week.
Okay.
No more than two weeks, if I remember correctly, but it's within one or two.
So I, I assume that the dome has a emergency or an emergency power generator that would back up in case of a power outage or something like that. Is that something that was intentional to stay there year round when the facility is taken down? Obviously, the generator is gonna stay there. It's ground mounted or is it a, something that would be removed along with everything else?
Yes, it's my understanding it's a service structure mounted to the ground, so it would, would be there. Is that correct, Mr. Tito?
The mechanical unit, we can do that forever.
Okay.
What we're taking down is that membrane, everything that's inside.
So that was one of my questions of, is this like a small building? Or is it just like a transformer on the ground? If it's just a transformer on the ground, is there gonna be any screening like we would have on a dumpster or something? That's not really very well laid out here. I would request if it's just a transformer on the ground, that it be screened, if it's a building, if it could look like, you know, compatible with the other design features of the area.
Yeah, it won't be a building, they're putting mechanicals on the ground and yes, they will be screened. I will show you and find that language in this text. We do know that is, that's in every jurisdiction in terms of a requirement and we have no plan to deviate from that. Or we would have asked for a divergence. We will comply with all standards of the code that are not addressed in the text specifically. But I think all code sections were addressed. We actually have to respond in detail to every code section that applies. So it is in here. I'll find it for you before the end of this meeting, but yeah.
So okay, some of us are more visual.
Yeah, we wanna see the detail.
Text driven. I'll just throw that out there if I don't see it.
Sure.
Or if I see something on paper visual that conflicts with the test, text, I'm, I'm just curious. So yeah, I, that's something I'd like to see with the dumpster screening detail and things like that.
Okay.
Were you done?
Um, yeah, I'm good.
Are you sure?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Dennis? Um, I have a couple of comments. I think you've answered most of them. I do have concerns with the fire department and the access to the rear, especially since it's a long way and if someone like, you know, I don't wanna say has a heart attack while they're playing pickleball, you're gonna wanna get an ambulance back there. Coordinate with the fire department because those permanent pavers usually have a weight limit. And you have to make sure that whatever truck they're planning on bringing down that road will work with that weight requirement of those, of the paving, whatever you do. Okay, so just coordinate with them on that. You know, I agree, you know, maybe having the, um, parking there might help. It looks like you did make a change on your landscape plan. A new one, which is great, because I had a comment about the signage with a solid base.
Oh, yes, that's right.
And it looks like you switched it from A to?
To a monument, yeah.
Yeah, to more of a monument sign. So thank you, because that was one of my comments. I was somewhat concerned about the height, because I had trouble reading it scale wise of the dome, but thirty-five is generally the height limit for a residential area anyway, thirty-six feet. So it's not gonna be overpowering, especially since it's along the railroad tracks. In terms of like your buildings, I did have sort of a couple of architectural comments. I do like, you know, the farmhouse look. Your renderings or your elevations are sort of, for me, a little confusing because your roof looks like a seam metal roof, but yet you're telling me it's going to be asphalt shingles in your materials. So I would make sure, see in the middle top, says asphalt shingles, but it's depicted or rendered as a standing seam metal roof.
I think that is just a weird rendering here, but I do know that they don't want to use the shingle.
Alright, but it's also shown here. This is a seam metal pattern.
Okay, we will definitely revise.
So just, just clarify, I mean, I don't care either way. I like the metal. I understand asphalt is sometimes more practical and cheaper. Just settle on sort of one and the other and use those materials as your pattern book. And same with your stone water table underneath your board and batten Harvey, which I'm fine with that. It is in your text. Let us know what the height of that water table is, because right now, the way your text is written, it says it's four, six and eight inch heights. Those are actually the heights of your simulated stone, not the height of your water table.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Just so, you know, I'm looking for a water table that's normally about two feet tall, not something that's, you know, four, six or eight inches. That's just a curb.
Okay, we will definitely revise the architectural renderings to be consistent.
And that's just like a little pet thing of mine since I'm an architect.
Yeah.
And yeah, you can put the building height on the elevations. We have an idea. I'm sure it's well under the fifty, but since there's no scale on here, I'm assuming your door might be seven feet. It could be eight feet tall. It could be six feet this. So just let us know what the building height is so we know that it matches what's in the text.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's, that's enough.
Are the domes heated?
The domes heated?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Or if you have another contractor that comes in and puts, puts the domes in and takes them out? That's kind of, kind of what I'm assuming is that. Just like you've already mentioned, the places that have them, I'm thinking that's probably what happens. Here's a contractor that comes in, installs these, takes them out when necessary.
Yeah, makes sense.
And really the one that we have, and the reason why I say that is my partner is the one handling that. The one contractor that we have that will help us is the connection from the manufacturing company of the dome.
And those are, and those are heated? Oh, that kind of leads me into, I, I suspect you're gonna wanna run this year round. I know you're deciding now that you don't wanna operate at night, but I can see that being the next step if it goes well, so.
At my end of the year.
But I think a lighting plan is appropriate.
You're being a business to make money, that.
Well, exactly. I hope the business goes well and, and then you decide to do that. Hey, this is really working.
Thank you.
So, um, with the lighting, I think the lighting plan would be important, especially since I think you might, especially since it's an indoor facility.
And, 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 and as they meant, as, as they mentioned about the parking, you'll think about, think about that, how that whole link needs to be made. Where the parking could be put in some other spots to make it closer to where people are using it, you know? I, I get it why you laid out this plan, but you got this whole way. Think, just, just, just play with, think about, think about the, where to play with the money, play with where it goes. I think that's gonna be a benefit versus, and I know some people, you want the last money.
Well, I'm thinking even if it's, um, maybe just A E A accessible parking. So that, you know, someone's in a, um, I know pickleball seems to be very popular among, um, the aging generation, I love to say that. I'm trying to figure out the appropriate word to use, but so that having the pickleball, of course, be more accessible. Might be a, a good idea.
Yeah, but the, if they're photo op, yeah, if you were comparing all of them, they might be pathetically important.
Exactly. And I have a request next time, if we can have a bigger photo metric, cause I can't read the little lighting print.
I believe the, the PDF is larger, but our printer can only go so large.
That I understood. I didn't realize it came as a PDF as well, cause I didn't have time to, to review the material, like you said, at the last minute, so.
Would you like a twenty-four by thirty-six?
Actually, you know, if it comes as a PDF, that is fine. I can just load it up on my computer as large as I need it with my failing eyesight.
Uh, I have one last comment. So the, the date, the timeline of the dome, and maybe I missed that. Is that in here? Is it say, like when it, when it would be up, so from March or from, I'm sorry, November to March mid?
It is not written in this text.
Is that something that we can put in here or is there gonna be based on?
We could add a stipulation that provides an estimate for that seasonal use of a dome and it would be something like mid-November to mid-March of each year.
Yeah, I, I.
I would feel, I would feel more comfortable with that because if you don't have that time limitation, by implication, it's a permanent structure. Um, so I would just, you know, just say approx, I know, I know a lot of people don't like the terms approximately, but, uh, just so we know that it's, um, not a permanent structure.
Yeah, I think that's doable and approximately or estimated would be fine.
Yeah, maybe estimated use, estimated use.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
You know, weather depending.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, cause if we have like, you know, late winters or early summers, you might take it down earlier or later.
But as long as it's not staying up until, you know, June and then going back, you know, in like August or something. Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking on that, that probably needs also maybe a little too though, right, and then when she said mid, mid-March.
Mid-November.
That's when it's, when it's going up, right, mid-November they're coming down.
Mid-March, that's right.
So I'm just thinking, you know, if the weather is bad or whatever, it's approximate, but, you know, we get two, three weeks out. And now the weather is still good, but it's still hot, so I, I think there needs to be some date that says it will be down by this.
So like a sunset clause, it has to be down by June first or something?
A no later than.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And put up the order earlier than, you know, don't go the first time there. Pick some dates. Then y'all can live with it.
Would this be drafted as a stipulation? That would be easier than putting it in the text kind of randomly where it's not really responding to a code section. Would that be a better way to handle it? I can help draft it and we can all, you know, circulate it and.
Yeah, I don't know. Robert, do you have a preference on that?
Personally, I would probably refer it to be in text, but I don't have a strong preference.
That's fine.
That might be better, cause, uh, you know, like five, ten years down the road, someone's gonna pull the development text. They might not pull the actual, um, you know.
Maybe in the architecture section where you're talking about the dome, you can just say that the intention is for it to be up from these dates.
Some of it's gonna be related to the contractor and their schedules, you know, so that always has to be adhered to with respect to whatever you put in there for dates.
Yeah, I mean, that's why there's some flexibility.
Right, there has to be flexibility.
Especially now in today's world, as the laser construction and cost increases, so, yeah. Schedules are hard to, to live with.
Any further comments from the board? So how long do you think it would take to make, it sounds like you've already made some of the changes that were in the staff report. The remaining ones, do you know roughly the timeline of when you think you could have that revised by?
We know, of course, I think we know that we are going to adjust that, um, access drive to beyond that north property line. That benefits seller in having two curb cuts to their property as well as buyer, as long as we can make adjustments to development standards in the text to accommodate that. The text drafting is a day or two.
Yeah.
The, um, the plans, what do you think about the engineering plans to accommodate an access drive shift? And whether or not the emergency access goes all the way down to the dry aisle?
Several days.
Yeah, a week, so a week.
So do we still have the Delaware Regional?
On the twenty-sixth?
We have it this week on the Thursday, this Thursday.
It's this Thursday. That's right, that's right. Okay, so.
But we will resolve your fire department's comments.
Okay. You have to, you have to resolve the fire department and they signed off on it, right? You have to resolve the water issues with Delaware.
Storage water, yeah.
Where they signed off on it and approved the plan, because those are critical to take.
Yeah, right now we propose underground storage and that's actually more expensive for us. It's our worst case scenario. We prefer to go down south in that pond. I think that those discussions are fruitful, so let's, we don't know that for sure, but I would think that's an outstanding, outstanding material item in terms of this proposal. We're gonna deal with it no matter what, cause we have to. Yeah, it's under law.
So what's our next available?
So my, my recommendation would be to continue this to June fourteenth, which is the, the next regular meeting. You do not have any applications for that date currently.
Any objections to that, June fourteenth? From applicant side?
June fourteenth works for us and, um, we would have all of these comments addressed that you have given us as feedback. And then maybe we could just start with the updated materials and I know this has been a long and detailed presentation tonight. I don't wanna redo the whole thing. I'm sure you don't want me to redo the whole thing, but just update you on these comments.
Yeah. Members of the board, is there anybody that has an issue with the fourteenth? Or do you have a scheduled meeting there anyways? No? We're good?
I'm good.
Okay, well, can I get a recommendation to continue, uh, the hearing for rezoning application C O N dash twenty-two dash zero five, New Gen Tennis Facility to June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M?
So moved.
Mr. Pollings?
Yes.
Mr. Mickel?
Yes.
Mr. Belles?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's get it.
Thank you.